Office assistant. But she also.
Hey.
She always been. That day members did just been an assessment.
Must be checking everything out. Must be a lot of checks.
Thank you. I mean, that's good.
I went at a bank one time. We go to renovation and I'm working in the lobby area. And the superintendent comes up and he's talking to me. And the head gentleman goes, "You ready with it?" She's got a shoebox. Hey, walk, you got that?
About a little bit, I think.
The ATM is shut for both. So when she come back, I said, "What she got money?" "She got a shoebox." She ain't owe nobody.
All right. Went past a little bit and put it away in the ATM out there. Do the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If you ever by bother have my little implication, most gracious heavenly Father, we give you thanks for another day, for another opportunity to work with this little town and make it better. Lord lead and guide us and take care of each one here, follow us home, to work, and all throughout the days and the rest of our lives. In your precious name, Jesus. Amen. Oh, God, you got sidetracked.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hig?
Yes.
First thing, minutes from July 3rd. I looked over and just get a chance to look over.
I did.
Did all look good, did you? Got here a motion to accept the minutes from July.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hig?
Yes.
Next big report from the board. Mr. Tally, do you get anything to report on? Anything you don't think of?
You want backup, so you said the minutes from July 3rd? We had a workshop minutes.
Oh, you said a workshop, okay. Got here a motion to accept both of them, I guess. Workshop July, okay. I forgot about that actual second part picture. There it is, didn't you? You seconded that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
He was trying to get all the stuff.
All right, Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hig?
Yes.
And the answer to your question, no, I don't have anything really.
Well, I think of everything that I get here and I can't remember. You have anything? Last month that?
Just people griping to me still about the things not getting cleaned up and still. So I'm telling them that's fixing to change.
They'll move down the street, turn it.
Oh, no, some of your neighbors do complain.
We should have, yeah. But, yeah, maybe we'll get that. I'm trying to think, I didn't have any, really didn't have any meeting or nothing this month. Only thing, really good, positive that we did. We did receive notice that we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to buy, to basically redo most of our city park. And that's through the American Diabetes Foundation or something.
Yeah, diabetes.
Yeah. No match, I mean, that's crazy that you get, that you can get a grant without a match anymore. But we did get that and working on another one. Through T-Mobile for fifty thousand, so, or up to fifty thousand. It could be ten, it could be, but we've got to figure out. That, when we got, received that done, it sort of filled our thoughts up with the fifty thousand. But we need to go back and figure out what we want to ask for there. I know we talked possibly about security or something. And I think, what's her name, Paul McKee?
Tom McKee.
Is handling, going to look and see if we can, if that, this part, if we can do that, yeah. Which would be good if we could, so. But whatever, we'll figure something else and get it, if it matches. I mean, that'd be awesome for us to get two hundred thousand dollars with no match. Because that, that just don't happen too much. But other than, there is so much, I can't remember if there's anything. I like positive every once in a while. It's nice if you're good news, right? But other than that, somewhere along, something has to pop up. I don't know what I'm doing, so. But in the meantime, we'll move on to new business. And first thing on new business, inter-local agreement with Benton, City of Copper Hill, City of Duck County, Polk County, Tennessee. And you guys met, then you feel better about it after you?
Yeah.
Had you meeting in?
Yeah, I think.
Good with it? Because like I think, I think the biggest thing we all had that concern was the money. I think, you was here with?
Yeah, that's why I'm here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I don't look like it, but how long ago is that?
Oh, no.
She's pulling together some grant information, so we divided it.
Oh, okay. But other than that, I think we, we had a copy of Copper Hill's thing. Did we just follow along pretty much with it? I mean, it looked like everything would work.
We basically, probably, it's covering their three-star joint economic development board. Just reconstituting it.
What does it mention, three-star down there? It don't, this is just.
It's part of the requirements for three-star.
This is just the joint economic community development board. Which I think we've had that, because you said you were basically on the ground for years. For a long time and it got lost somewhere through the years and hadn't been utilized. But I think trying to bring it back, so. I think it'll help. I mean, it used to be, we used to do a lot of stuff, same like with it. We done pretty good for our three-stars, so maybe we can get back to that. But I guess probably need a motion from the inter-local agreement.
Well, yeah, I make a motion to approve the inter-local agreement with the county and two cities.
Got here a second.
A second. Mayor Collins?
Mayor Collins, yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hig?
Yes.
That, and we, okay. Next should be the resolution. Yeah, basically, well, we sort of done this.
Good that with you.
Yeah, I don't know if we done it, sort of reversed, but in the meantime, resolution basically, let's see, to approve and enter into an inter-local agreement with the town of Benton, City of Copper Hill, Polk County, Tennessee, to form the Polk County Joint Economic and Community Development Board pursuant to Tennessee Code animated five, one, S-1, S-113, and public chapter eleven oh one of the Public Acts of nineteen ninety-eight. So. Let me send this thing to you. But this is.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I hear a second.
A second. Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hig?
Yes.
Get a sign issue already.
No, you gave me the one that you did sign. Well, not rising.
Next is ordinance one thirty. This authorizes a member of the local government legislative body to participate in a scheduled meeting by electronic means. Explain that a little bit more to us, because I know we've got the emails, but I've slept since then.
Subs that's in.
Yeah.
What this is, and it goes with public chapter three ninety-two, SB one thirty-six slash HB one fifty-two pertaining to open meetings. We need to update it because Tennessee law changed theirs. So if a member of the commissioners or council is dealing with an emergency, whether it's medical or family, has been called into military service, or is unable to attend due to inclement weather, that you can still participate and have a vote and say what goes on in the meeting as long as the chair can identify you visually. And each member can meet virtually twice a year. That way, there's always a quorum and you don't miss out.
There you go. I know we talked about it and looked over it, but in the meantime, do I hear a motion to accept ordinance one thirty?
I'll make a motion.
Right, you're safe. Okay.
Mayor Collins?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hig?
Yes.
And next, it looks like add Christmas Eve to holiday list from flowers.
Because last year after the holidays, you said, "Remind me to put that down there." Because you was, we're always real good about doing that. And said, "We needed to add that or not." So everybody was clear on it when the holidays come up this year. And I just now thought of it last week. I forgot. I had your note, but I forgot.
So, thank you. We don't give them Friday off after Thanksgiving, do we? Or do we?
Yeah, two days.
Okay, which, that's where, okay. Sort of like we did, we don't do it Monday, we swap that Friday for Monday, okay?
Right.
So. Christmas Eve, how's that? Now, if it followed on Saturday?
The reason it's set up like that, I mean, basically, the federal holidays, we follow those.
We start following, we follow the state holiday, not the federal. If we did, we'd be closed October and all these others.
Yeah, but the state holidays, though, that's the way it's set up. And I have no problem with doing it, but what I will say, though, I think we need to revisit our employee handbook.
Well, that's true.
And that's part of it, so.
There's some other stuff in the handbook. We, I don't remember when we updated it last, but yeah, we probably need to go back and.
We had in our.
Go over it in workshop, just look and see what we can.
Our ordinances, M-Pass is supposed to be working on.
But we did. We did update the personnel policy with the holidays. Betsy Cunningham helped me do those year before last. But this one and then June teen, you know, those were the two in question. That wasn't on there at the time, but everything else is still in place. So, but it's, it's don't have to do anything. It's just a reminder to put it there, so whatever you just want to do, whenever you just want to do.
You don't have the handbook, do you? Right here, we.
No, it's back over there.
I can never check the holidays to them all, some that they're not, and they throw them probably. Those me, but.
I had a calendar, I can tell you. New Year's Day.
Right.
Martin Luther King Day.
Good Friday.
Good Friday. Memorial Day, Labor Day, Fourth of July, Thanksgiving, and the day after, and Christmas.
Others around between there, the ones in June teen.
But that, and then, you know, we, you know.
But Columbus, let's see, we trade that out basically for that Friday after Thanksgiving, so.
And President, President's Days, I think that's on there. I think, I think that's one of the ones that we added when we updated it. But I would have to look, but.
Look, yeah, we do workshop this, I will.
Gotcha.
Look at it and talk about, figure out everything, what we want to do. But there's a few other things, I'm thinking I could, it'll come to him when we get on it, but.
Okay, that works.
So, do we want to add Christmas Eve, or?
I'd say wait till.
Make the workshop. Do the workshop, talk it over, can look there.
Yeah.
So we just table that there.
Table till work.
Next month?
Yeah.
Miss Yerby.
Yeah, this, yeah, I don't remember what I wrote, but. Because I think this probably, we're going to have to put a transmission in the red Ford and a little over a spin, that's, we need to just make a vote on it. But we've got the Ford on it, labor and everything was at this width. Okay, it was without tanks, it was forty-two, seventy-two, eighty-four. At least we can pay that all, we just pay for the transmission, they'll order it then, and get it put in, and pay the labor, so. I'm one that don't really, I don't like to pay everything upfront, pay something if not right, so. I just want them to just pay for the transmission, let them order it, get that in, then when they get in. Because I thought it was pretty cheap, just five hundred and twenty-two dollars for labor.
Yeah.
That don't, that don't sound right in the way for transmission, but you know, just the way things did.
Slide in, slide in.
It shouldn't be too bad, especially, well, I'll say that, I don't have my luck done, but. But I think, what's our normal limit that we don't have to?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
It's under the five, so.
It's under the five, but still, I just felt like we need to, we all in agreeance for this. Do I hear a motion to just buy the transmission? And then when they get it put in?
I'll make a motion to approve the full amount.
And just pay for the transmission.
Yeah, write check for the transmission and pay for the labor once we get it.
A second.
Get that through.
I got it.
It's going shorthand, it's.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hig?
Yes.
Tell Wesley to put bits hard on it.
You know, it's amazing if that thing's lasted that long, as much as it's pulled in gear and out of gear and stopped. I mean, because that's a two thousand one, I think, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's been a good one.
Can't complain, so.
Too good to get rid of.
I told him, it's not that big of a deal. That we're, we're just taking a little heavy chick every week.
Did he find the front seat?
I found one, but I hadn't seen where to get it. No, I hadn't even.
Oh, I thought he was too.
When, if he did, he didn't tell me, so I don't know. He'd have to have some money somewhere. But there is one, I found one, I think, over in Madisonville. Found another the other day, and it got gone quick, I don't know why, but it didn't stay on there that long. But other than that, then, something, I guess we could have talked about reports. Guys went down and they pulled up the sidewalk that's been humped up and getting worse and worse. So they get that picked up, I think, for Jason to, he said, "Yeah, I got down there to look at it." I talked to him a little bit last night.
He's been down there working, he's got rig guard and stuff, he's got concrete scheduled for in the morning.
There's nothing underneath that, we don't know how that, it's weird, yeah.
What's going on?
But anyway, yeah, he said he'd go get down and see what's causing it, but I don't think. It's just crazy, I don't know. But anyway, get that thing fixed up, he had about raised, what, about close to eighteen inches of this. I mean, it kept getting higher and higher. And I thought the sidewalk might be pushing it together, but there's no separation, no roof. It's just weird. I don't know, we may have covered it up.
Yeah.
But I was thinking, we'd lay that sidewalk, what, two thousand six?
Yeah.
Six or seven.
Something's trying to get out there.
It's a little weird, yeah. We married, I don't know what we covered up, but they did get that. If Jason worked on that, that's good, they didn't, we voted on all that, but last year didn't, yeah.
Doesn't work, so.
Well, had to get him something to do. I don't think, like I said, I don't know. I lay down, I think of something else. But other than that, I don't have anything, so. I guess, do the announcements here, of course, August nineteenth at five thirty should be housing board meeting. Then August twenty-first at six PM will be the planning commission, which, we didn't have this month, didn't have nothing on the agenda. I guess there's, we'll just sort of fill that out. And, oh, Monday, September first, Labor Day will be closed, but the garbage will be picked up that Tuesday. They'll have a good time Tuesday, won't they?
Yeah, they will, and we're going to do a workshop. What would be the best day for August for a workshop?
Well, if we did a housing board at five thirty, we could probably do that at six.
Yeah, just do that.
And that, we're all together.
That's August nineteenth, isn't it?
That's perfect.
So workshop at six.
That not day.
If we can remember.
I'll remind everybody. You said six.
Yeah, that workshop, housing shouldn't be, it shouldn't take thirty minutes. And we need to have, we hadn't had one in months to have. I guess, wait for us, yeah, everything's been, I think, I ain't going to say it's good, because every time you do it, something happens, but anyway. So, next we're going to the floor, got comments from the floor, anybody got anything to say, or? You didn't want to go out of the house today, did you?
Want to watch city government action.
Oh, God. You need to get a laugh. But anyway, Mike, Mary Lou, you good? Just tell them to get out of the house for a little bit. Glad you made it. Won't see you, and I'll see you on Sunday, but I don't see you. Getting harder to see anybody anymore, which is a good thing, it, yeah. Yeah, I was out there one Sunday, and I was actually missed, somebody missed me, I'm like, wow, that's a good thing. Get too many, nobody knows if you're there or not, do they?
True.
You got anything?
Appreciate you signing the room.
We think we done everything on that? Yeah, when it just came up, we just sort of had some questions. And I thought we'd done something, that's why I wanted James to.
Just, just paperwork and get everything in line, because State Hollard and we jumped.
Yeah.
What it comes down to.
And honestly, yeah, had hit it going away.
Well.
Yeah, a few years back, I mean.
Like I say, it ain't going away now, because that's where she's at tonight, pulling stuff together for one grant and working on a couple others.
That's good, I mean.
Yeah, better than this.
Yeah, and it's good that somebody's willing to step up and do it, because that's, it's getting harder to find anybody that's even, I mean, really. Even here, I'm telling you, if it wasn't for the development district, man, it's, man, they, it, I can't say enough about them four, what they've done for the city, just where, before we got here, they, I mean, they've done everything for, for grants. All that says, "We're looking for something," and suddenly go to digging. I don't know until, what, maybe six months ago about the other grant? And then all of a sudden, you got it, and it sort of told me, but I'm thinking that the American Diabetes Foundation, those stuff is, it's health, basically, you know, so they putting that out there, because you think, man, they could use that money on research or something, but, but they want your lifestyle and try to make that better, I guess, is sort of what it's key toward. And we're thrilled, and we got the pickleball courts, we got that, and we spent some money on it, but, man. Of course, two thousand seven, we put the playground in, and it's, God, it's hard to believe, it's been there that long, so. Hopefully, we can get that updated and some other stuff, and. Yeah, because we've had to spend some on it because of fencing. Well, no, actually, insurance for the most part covered that, didn't it?
And duty ended that after?
Other than deductible. Yeah, but what we really, the other grant, we're wanting cameras or something, because we've.
And a gate.
An electronic gate, I think you'd found, or something, but something, just because it's hard to find somebody to close it every morning or in the evening. And if we could do that, we could open the clothes, which we'll probably do that whether or without the grant. But in the meantime, if we can get it paid for, that's even better. Keep working at it, just, we're going to have to raise it up as the years go back, because the trees are growing and we're going to lose our views if we don't watch them. I mean, it's crazy, anybody grew, but just, there's a lot, people utilize it more than you think. And I think there've been a few planned, hadn't.
Yeah, I've been trying to catch people up there and take pictures.
Which you been, or you still want to sort of do a day to have like an opener or all that, just? Maybe get a little more publicity so people use it, because people ask me all the time, "What is pickleball?" I tell them, "I can say this now," I said, "But it's old people tennis." And we can't move as fast as we used to, so you just have to, but man, it's big, clean, and I'm a merchant. So it's, it's pretty good. Get James up there, we're going to be teammates, ain't we?
Yeah.
But I hit, we're guessing, we're blessed, really, here in town to get, get the things we do to help people out, so. I just love to do that, but I hate it when some, one person goes and tries to mess stuff up. And it, and I, I, some of these folks nowadays, I don't, I don't know if it's drugs and stuff or what, but they, they don't care if it's a camera, live TV or what.
I've been going up there running people off, like there's, yeah, I've been going up there and they're sleeping on the tables. I've been telling them they need to go on.
I would like to anchor those tables, get them set.
Motion.
Yeah, they.
They did get a motion, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah, and stuff, but it's just amazing, but, I don't know. But, but it, definitely knew, I didn't know people playing pickleball. Messing, surely never not, we might bother Jackie more than ever. But other than that, is there anything else that we?
So we're good to go, though, on the ordinances and start enforcing stuff?
Oh, there you go, we didn't put that down there, did we? Yeah, talk to Mike, Mike's definitely ready. We got everything except the letters, and talked to Whitney the other day.
And she brought it back, here it is, this is the packet that Whitney needs to get.
Okay, okay.
So.
But anyway, yeah, Mike's ready to get rolling on that, so.
In here.
We probably.
So what?
Still want to, let's see if I can't figure out, there's got to be some training out there for code enforcement officers. I mean, I know there is, it's just got to be through.
Tennessee Fire.
Fire marshal stuff. Yeah, I think, when I looked it up, I bet it shows like codes for housing, you know, but I don't know.
So.
But I know they've got them something.
I want to know where I can tell people when I'm, you know, when I'm asked. So the letters go out first.
That's what, let's throw Mike, we need to talk back. So how do you think we need to do this? Do we need to just let him go up once and give him a verbal warning? Or when he shows up, having the paperwork?
Just be a written letter.
Do the letter in thirty days, I mean, that's how you want to start it.
Yeah, just be a letter.
Then give them that thirty days, and then when they show back up, if nothing's better, write them citations, send them to court.
Yeah.
Because, you know, sometimes you can just talk and just start. I think yesterday, man, the guy across the road bringing stuff in, just more.
I thought it was going to get better for a while, I thought they were cleaning up, and then it just all back out again.
That's the reason you've got to give the letter.
Yeah, and it was, yeah, thought you'd be cordial and maybe, oh, they'll do it, but, but they some that you're going to have to. And there's others around town.
And how are the letters sent to them?
Well, Mike.
Is he going to hand deliver?
That's what he said, he would just do that. It'd be nice if you could send certified, just so we'd know for sure they got it.
Be banned by our ordinance.
But will they go, what if then if they don't look at them, I'm still another month out, you know?
Sign it, whatever, so you're still out, but if he does it from that day, I guess, yeah. And we had a little incident fireworks there, a few days after the fourth, in the middle of the day, and there's a guy down, down the road from his own hospice, not good, toy, and I can't believe he's still hanging on, but those things are going off right over his house, and that wasn't good. The guy was laughing, said, "Nobody can do nothing about it." Had the deputies go down, he went in the house, but then Mike went over and he answered the door for Mike to give him. But Mike gave him a copy and got on him pretty hard, and it's been no more problems. And most of the time, you can talk to people, and that's, you know, for the most part stops, so. And I don't think the guy realized, well, he was, I don't know. But other than that, we'll, he's ready to get going, and then, as far as the guys, he's ready to start going up there in the morning, getting them lined up and started and ready too. So when do you, you want to get him going on that?
Yeah.
Maybe start on Monday?
Yeah, thought it was.
I did too.
No, because I told him just to wait till we get everything for this other, and just, yeah. Of course, with Mickey, everybody would say prayer for Mickey, because he's an ICU and he's not good. If he got bladder bad and it bled over into his liver, then he, he needs prayers right now, so. But they got him on IV and stuff, he's actually alert and talking, but he don't talk well, man, he's weak. If he went another day or two, I don't think, I don't think he made it. And he's still not out of the wood, but they, he's down the door later, he's in the place, will they do something for him? So he's finally got the help he needs, I hope, so. We went down to the vest with him, damn, took him some money, people donated together, and took him, wife and his mom and dad, they're all down there. They won't leave till he comes home, I'm sure. It's tough, and it's, it's hard on them, but, but they know if they need anything, all they have to do is just yell at us. And we'll, they'll be, they'll be taken care of, and got a lot, lot of worry on them, but, but. you got to just be a prayer for him and his family. But other than that, I don't, I don't have anything else. Anybody here? Everybody good? All righty, then, your motion, do it, Jerry.
When did you get to take those down?
I can probably do that tomorrow, and thank you.
There's a couple of them, I'll just glance through it, but I don't think the event is. This one, I know we updated.
Section. I'm down in Cleveland, so yeah, it don't take long to get down or something. I can do that, or?
One that did. And then there was one the other, so I can't remember.